Go through the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jim and a second by Steve. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is public comments. If anybody wishes to address the council, go ahead and do so now.
I am Walden, two-eleven, Eighteenth Avenue Northeast, Hampton. I'm curious regarding Cemetery Fence Project. I think it should be completed. All invoices are in. Wondering when they're planning on a possible rededication. Um, they have talked maybe Memorial Day, Fourth of July, approaching Labor Day. Um, we have a lot of volunteers that work very tirelessly on that project and I think they deserve, you know, some, uh, a little more formal recognition for all the hard work they did and make this project become a reality.
Okay. Um, I think that was a, a project that was taken out by an outside committee, so I think you'd have to address that, that committee.
Who would you address regarding that?
Well, the committee that spearheaded the project. I mean, the city put forth the-
Seed money for-
Yeah, seed money, um, but the project itself, I mean, I don't think it's a city project, so.
Okay. Probably the gentleman who did the most of it has gone.
Ted or Mark or Dick, Eddie Flynn.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Anything else under public comment? Okay. We'll move ahead. Next, uh, on the agenda is, uh, committee reports. Chairman Lukens-Meyer is absent. Would another member like to, uh, comment? Okay. Uh, their next, uh, next meeting, Ron, I think we're gonna do it-
September fourth at five-thirty. We had talked about having, uh, FMP meet at four-thirty and City Services at five-thirty, uh, but we're going to swap that, so City Services will meet on September fourth at four-thirty. Finance Personnel will meet on September fourth at five-thirty. Okay, we'll repeat that a few times during this meeting, so we're all clear.
Okay. Thanks, Ron. Uh, City Services, Chair Davies.
Yeah, our next meeting, as Ron said, is, uh, September fourth at four-thirty PM here in Council Chambers.
Jim? Uh, next, Public Assets, Sheriff Steve Pines.
Thanks, John. Message from the Public Assets Committee meeting that was held on August twenty-first, twenty-twelve at five-thirty in Hampton City Council Chambers. Members present, Steve Armschirr, Alvin Craig Eckhart, Jim Davies. Others present, Mayor Sean Deetz, City Manager Ron Dunn, Public Works Director Doug Tar, Chief Bob Schaefer, and citizens. Meeting called to order at five-thirty. Under unfinished business, Tar updated the committee on punch list items regarding the Progress Park Improvement Project. Tar explained that the seating was scheduled in the near future, minor tennis court items are on order, and handrail hardware is on order as well. The committee also provided Tar with direction to follow through the court approval of demolition of six-oh-three First Street Northeast as a priority for controlled burning this fall. Dunn and Tar explained that staff was offered information about the properties to local citizens in hopes that new ownership would ease the city financial burden of demolishing these structures. But nobody has moved on the properties at this time and interest in them has been minimal. Under New Business, the committee discussed installing porta-potties at East Park, Progress Park. Tar provided the committee with that, with a handout outlining the costs associated with renting and maintaining existing porta-potties. After much discussion, the committee directed staff to look into costs association, associated with purchasing ADA-sized porta-potties and consider budgeting for them in an extra budget. The committee also directed staff to utilize a shelter restroom at East Park until weather is not conducive for it to be opened. The committee also discussed a request from a citizen to stop, uh, to add stop signs at the intersection of Twelfth Avenue Northwest and First Street Northwest. Chief Schaefer did not recommend the addition of stop signs due to a four-way stop less than one block away from the proposed intersection. And advised the addition of such signs would create more traffic congestion during school hours and events. Schaefer also explained that he would be placing a speed trailer on Twelfth Avenue in the near future of the proposed intersection to just, excuse me, to deter speeders on Twelfth Avenue. The committee did not move to consider the addition of the requested stop signs at this time. The meeting adjourned at five-fifty-eight, and our next meeting will be the eighteenth of September, five-thirty, right here in Council Chambers. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, under New Businesses, consideration of approval of a City Council Ward One appointment. And, uh, we've received two applications for the appointment. Eric Groth is unable to be here, uh, today, uh, but if we need him, he's available by phone, uh, we can make that happen. Val Hogback, I think they've seen, is here. Uh, so Val, I guess if you would like to address the council first, uh, on your application? Um, and if the council has any questions for you?
Um, I handed in my application about two weeks ago. I just would be interested in helping my ward in supporting the city in changes and anything that needs to be done. I'll be honest, I don't have a lot of experience, but I'm a quick learner and I think I know enough people and I get to know people well enough that I would have everybody's best interests in hearts.
Questions for Val? Yeah, please. Val, if the, of the appointment becomes favorable for you, would you consider running for the position in November then?
Yes.
Um, I'll make one comment on that. The actual deadline for, to file for that did pass at five o'clock, so it would be a write-in basis, so, um, just wanna make note of that. We didn't have any nomination petitions filed, uh, for that vacancy, so anybody who's going to seek it, whether it be you or Mr. Groth or anybody else, it would have to be a write-in, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Val? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we do have Eric's application here. That's, uh, the only thing we got since he's, um, absent. Um, did you guys have a chance to read through it? Did you want me to read through it, uh, for the public? Um, how do you wanna handle that since he's not in attendance? I'm open. Any suggestions? Or do you just wanna go ahead and call him? Do you guys choose?
I read through the applications. I really don't have any questions.
Okay.
I do appreciate Eric's honesty about, uh, that he wouldn't be able to surpass November, but I do appreciate him setting up and being willing to help in the interim. I think that's very admirable.
Okay. Anything else on, uh, for Eric's application, comments? Okay. Would it be beneficial for us to call him or do you wanna skip that before the, a motion to appoint or, uh, otherwise?
They don't have any requests.
Can I just speak? Okay.
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
I don't have any questions, I have-
Okay. Do you, uh, somebody wanna make a motion then to appoint Val or to, uh, have any other motion?
I move to appoint Val Hogback.
Okay. And a motion by Steve to appoint Val Hogback. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Craig. Alright, any further discussion? Okay. Uh, and I'll just note that, um, uh, we'll need, we'll just need three votes, uh, to approve this appointment, and, um, the, the term for the appointment would be just until the general election, at which time, uh, the winner of that election, which will be a write-in election, um, will take over the position, um, as soon as the, kind of, votes are campus and Michelle. Is that correct?
The twelfth.
The, the twelfth?
Twelfth.
Okay, twelfth of November, so, uh, that's how long the term would be. Is there any other questions on the appointment process before, before the vote? Okay. Alright, so we have a motion by Steve and a second by Craig to appoint, uh, Val Hogback to the City Council Ward One vacancy for a term until the general election, scheduled for Tuesday, number six, two thousand and twelve. Arms?
Aye.
Eckhart?
Aye.
Prawley?
Aye.
Davies?
Aye.
And Lukens-Meyer is absent. Val Hogback has the appointment. Congratulations. So, um, Val, are you available to stick around after the meeting to be sworn in? Okay. We'll do that after the meeting. Okay. Next on the agenda is, uh, consideration of approval of the two thousand and twelve CDBG Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan. City Manager Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor. The Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan, uh, it's a federal requirement that this be adopted by anyone receiving federal and state money. This Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan is prepared by the City of Hampton in accordance with the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four, as amended in HUD regulations at twenty-four CFR forty-two point three-two-five, and is applicable to our CDBG and home assisted projects. Consistent with the goals and objectives of activities assisted under the act, the City of Hampton will take steps to minimize the, the direct and indirect displacement of persons from their homes. The City of Hampton will provide relocation assistance for lower-income tenants who, in connection with an activity assisted under the CDBG program, move permanently or move personal property from real property as a direct result of the demolition of any dwelling or the conversion of lower-income dwelling units in accordance with the requirement of twenty-four CFR forty-two point three-five. A displaced person who is not a lower-income tenant will be provided relocation assistance in accordance with the Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisition Policy Act of nineteen seventy, as amended in implementing regulations for United CFR Part Twenty-four. Um, there's more to this document. It's available for public viewing. Um, I'm not gonna read the entire document. Like I said, uh, it's a federal requirement that this be adopted, and our administrators are recommending, so, thank you, Mayor.
Uh, I have a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan.
So moved to approve.
Second. I have a motion by Diane and a second by Jim. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any motion carries? Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is consideration of approval of two thousand and twelve CDBG Owner Occupied Rehabilitation Program Administrative Plan. City Manager Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor. Administrative Plan, um, the primary goals and objectives of the community's owner-occupied rehabilit- rehabilitation program are to preserve and/or stabilize the community's housing stock that is affordable to low and moderate income persons, to provide safe, decent, sanitary housing to the community's residents who do not have the financial means to make repairs to their own dwellings, to improve the general aesthetics and attractiveness of the community's housing stock, to maintain or increase the community's residential structure tax-based, and to assist in the promotion and attraction of economic and community development opportunities, and to make the community, community's housing stock, those constructed prior to January first, nineteen seventy-eight, at least temporarily, lead safe. Um, this is a lengthy document as well. It's available, available for public review, and, uh, if anybody has any questions, our administrator is proving, or is recommending this be adopted as well for our CDBG program.
Thank you, Ron. If there's no questions, I'll take a motion. Move to approve. A motion by Steve, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Diane to approve. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
On the, the pavement, oh, I'm sorry. The pavement part of the project, um, is, the actual amount, construction completed to date is slightly larger than what the contract amount is based on, um, the asphalt going a little over quantity, and that was just to shape the fi, or the, the quartz so that they would drain a little better. And I also noted to them that although the pavement one is a final, um, payment, the statement of completion would not be completed until the punch list items are done, and then they can produce retainer at that point. Um, that's on the pavement portion of it. On the park portion of it, um, we're not quite done. We have two items left to complete, and hopefully that'll be done here in the next few weeks. Um, they need to complete the handrail along the top of the retaining wall and along the stairs and around the, uh, west tennis court shelter, and then they also need to get the seating. Okay. Thank you. You're welcome.
In an effort to, um, hope that, that grass will actually live when we plant it. So, um, those are all scheduled to be completed in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, there are ten of motion.
So moved to approve.
Motion by Steve to approve.
I'll second.
By Jim. Motion by Steve and a second by Jim to approve. Uh, any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is the approval of, uh, claims as recommended by the Finance Committee. Uh, those claims are in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents, and that doesn't include, uh, two of three pay estimates of hard rock asphalt totaling ninety-one thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty dollars and thirty-two cents. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the claims?
So moved.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the claims? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is consideration of approval and adoption of, uh, resolutions and ordinances. Uh, first is, uh, Resolution twenty-twelve dash thirty-seven, a resolution of support and financial commitment for the Main Street Hampton program. And, uh, I don't see, bro, I could have that here, so, uh, Ron, did you?
Yeah, thank you, I'll do this. Resolution two thousand and twelve dash thirty-seven, a resolution of support financial commitment for the Main Street program in Hampton, Iowa. Whereas an agreement between the Iowa Economic Development Authority, Main Street Program in Hampton, Iowa, and the City of Hampton, Iowa, for the purpose of continuing Main Street Iowa program in Hampton, Iowa. And whereas this agreement is pursuant to the contractual agreements between the National Trust for Historic Preservation and the Iowa Economic Development Authority to assist in the revitalization of the designated Main Street project area of Hampton, Iowa. And whereas the City Council of Hampton, Iowa, endorses the goal of economic revitalization of the historic commercial district within the context of preservation and rehabilitation of its historic buildings, and supports the continuation of the Main Street four-point approach as developed by the National Trust for Historic Preservation and espoused by Main Street, Iowa. Now therefore be it resolved of the City Council of the City of Hampton, Iowa, meeting in regular session on August twenty-eighth, two thousand and twelve, that the City of Hampton, Iowa hereby agrees to support both financially and philosophically the work of Main Street Program in Hampton and designates the Greater Franklin County Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors to supervise the program director. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, do I have a motion on, uh, to approve the resolution? Remove, we approve? Okay.
Second.
A motion by Jim and a second by Steve to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? Okay. Eckhart?
Aye.
Prawley?
Aye.
Davies?
Aye.
Arms?
Aye.
Lukens-Meyer is absent. Motion carries. Uh, next is, uh, ordinance number three-thirty-five. This is the final reading of the ordinance amending chapter sixty-nine of the Hampton Municipal Code of two thousand and nine by adding additional section thereto providing area for limited parking. Um, and we can, uh, read that ordinance a lot. Do we have a request for that, or Ron, if you just wanna go ahead?
Yeah, it's brief here. Uh, chapter sixty-nine of Hampton Municipal Code two thousand and nine is hereby amended by adding thereto new subsections to section sixty-nine point oh-eight, adding number fourteen and number fifteen as follows. Fourteen, First Street Northwest, west side of the street, sixty-five feet south, south right-of-way of Twelfth Avenue Northwest, no parking. Number fifteen, First Street Northwest, east side of the street, sixty-five feet south of the south right-of-way of Twelfth Avenue Northwest, no parking. Thank you, Mayor.
Ron? Uh, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay. Motion by Steve, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Diane to approve the, uh, ordinance? Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Uh, roll call, vote, uh, Prawley?
Aye.
Arms?
Aye.
Davies?
Aye.
Eckhart?
Aye.
Lukens-Meyer is absent. Uh, motion carries. Next is, uh, the consent agenda, and that includes to approve the previous minutes as drafted from the Tuesday, August fourteenth, two thousand and twelve, regular session. Schedule the next regular session for Tuesday, September eleventh, two thousand and twelve, at five-thirty PM in City Council Chambers, and the approval of new, uh, renewal of alcohol licensing for Carol's Flower Box, one-sixteen Second Avenue Northwest in Hampton, Iowa. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Craig and a second by Steve. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is staff reports. Please chief Bob Schuber.
Thank you, Mayor, City Manager and Council. Um, things been going pretty smoothly. Uh, still having a small problem with, uh, some vandalism in the area. Again, I encourage any residents that see something to report it. Um, I also think that we might have somebody that is, um, basically trying to assist in getting rid of the wood at the wood dump because I believe that, um, in talking with the, uh, fire chief, that, uh, somebody lit that on fire again. Um, again, that's kind of a hard, hard spot for us to go and kinda monitor, all because of the location, uh, the gates being closed, locked, and then trying to get around in there. Um, I did talk with, um, Doug Tar, was wondering if people were getting in from the trail, and, uh, he told me that there was rocks in place so that they would not be able to do that, so they must be walking in or, uh, somehow rather getting in or another way. Um, other than that, nuisance, uh, have been working on that as well. Uh, there were twenty-three nuisance CRs from August first until the thirteenth. We do have nine of those closed and we do have fourteen open. Uh, those fourteen that are open, um, I know that, um, that Corporal Morrison has been working on those, and I do know that there's probably gonna be at least one, if not two, citations issued, uh, in reference to those, but otherwise, um, things have been going pretty good as far as getting things cleaned up. And again, I encourage people to make sure that they do do that. Um, we had a, one resident that had appliances out in their yard, in, in the front anyway, and when the officer arrived, they knew exactly what he was there for, so, but encourage all the residents to help in, um, going along with the enforcement. Other than that, anybody have any questions?
So, you talked about the discussion you had with the fire chief, so is, is his assumption then that that fire on the Compo site was intentional?
Believe so. Uh, he has no other reason why it would have started. You know, I did ask him with the dry conditions, um, somebody hauling brush out there or whatever and flick a cigarette in the back end of the truck, you know, is that possible that the thing would smoke there long enough that, you know, that it would happen? The only thing is, is I think it's happened frequently enough that, you know, maybe one time, yeah, maybe, but this is the third time that it's occurred, so.
Anything else for the chief? Next up, okay.
Thank you.
Public Works Director Doug Tar?
Thank you, Mayor. A few things here briefly. Uh, State Forester, I'm a rumor, will be attending a kickoff meeting for the newly-appointed Hampton Tree Board that has been scheduled for Thursday, September twentieth, at six PM at City Council Chambers. Um, they'll be putting together the agenda for the, the first go-around, and then after that, the board can take over and, and, uh, make things happen there. That's kind of a, an exciting thing to announce. Um, Water Department, if you've listened to the radio past couple days, we, uh, actually had a, what we thought at originally was a main break yesterday, uh, just north of the intersection of, uh, Third Avenue, uh, Southwest and First Street Southwest. It ended up being a service leak, and the, the bad side about that is, is, you know, the property owners basically are, are responsible for paying for, for those repairs, however, but even worse is we found out, it, it actually was a lead, uh, service line, and, and, uh, lead is basically, I'm sure they're gonna pop up here and there once in a great while, but, uh, Clean Water Drinking Act of, was nineteen seventy-five, um, you know, basically says no lead. So, if, uh, I just wanna remind citizens that, you know, you might wanna, I, I know there's expense to it, but you may wanna take a look at your water service. If, if you do have a, a lead line for water service, um, there really is a potential for a health issue if you have that. Um, so, um, just as a reminder, if anything else, folks, uh, lead can be pretty harmful to you in the right amounts. Um, next is, uh, Ron and I met with Tom Madden and, uh, and some of the local emergency responders to discuss the water tower project. Um, then we also had a bit of a kickoff meeting, so to speak. The contractor was available by phone for our meeting, and we're, we don't have any solid, solid dates yet, but the anticipated date that they'll be mobilizing in will be as soon as the sixth or seventh of, um, of September here, and I anticipate that project getting rolling. Um, once the tower's offline, it'll be offline in thirty-five days. Um, that, uh, we emphasized, uh, project completion date on time. Um, they are actually able to mobilize in on the first of September and chose not to do that, so, um, however, Ron and I do let them know that, you know, be ready, you know, you, you need to hit the date on this thing because it is very important. Um, so anyway, that, those are some of the hotter topics we've had, and, uh, does anybody have any questions or concerns, anything out about, uh? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Okay. Ron, Val?
Um, there's going to be a letter going out, uh, to all of our customers regarding the water tower project and, and some things that, uh, everyone might experience. Uh, the plan is that the pressure, there won't, there shouldn't be much notice in a drop in pressure, but in heavy use times it might happen, so I encourage everyone to read the letter. It's got good information in. If anybody has any questions, contact City Hall. Um, that, that letter's going out August thirty-first. And then just a reminder, again, uh, City Services will meet at four-thirty on September fourth, and FFP, five-thirty on September fourth. That's all I have, unless anybody has any questions.
Okay. Thanks, Ron. Council reports, uh, Jim Davies, Ward Two.
I'd like to congratulate Val on her appointment. Looking forward to working with you. Uh, continue to hear many good comments about Progress Park and the improvements there. That's really nice to see that park being used. And just wanted to mention that the Hampton Historic Preservation Commission's next meeting is Wednesday, September fifth, at five-thirty PM here in City Council Chambers. And that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Diane Prawley, work through.
Uh, the other thing I have is I wanted to thank both applicants for their interest. We certainly appreciate it.
Okay. Craig Eckhart, Ward Four.
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to congratulate Val. Look forward to working with you, and I think that you'll find it enjoyable and definitely challenging at times, but it's, it's, it's a well-positioned, and I wish you the best. Um, like Jim too, I would like to comment on Progress Park. I've seen lots of people using it. Uh, however, the first injury would be up here at the ski board park, but it turns out it was a tennis court with Councilman Davies. So much for that, but, uh, and last, I'd like to thank Cindy Johnson. She's gonna be retiring at the end of this week, uh, as the Director of the Franklin County Alcoholism Service Center. That's an association or an organization that the city has partnered with and funded for a good many years. Uh, they touch countless people. She's always provided a quarterly report on time every time to this council and, like, prior councils too, but, uh, the asset in our community. Larry Fanning will be taking over that position, and we'll, uh, wish them both the best of luck and everything. And last, Mayor, is to wish everybody have a holiday and be safe.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Chris. And Steve Armschirr.
I wanna congratulate Val as well, and I kinda echo a little bit about Cindy Johnson and the Alcoholism Center. At one time, there was a great number of, those centers in the state of Iowa, there's fifty, and as I understand now, that's the last one left, the one we have. And they've helped a lot of individuals through the years, so I certainly hope it continues. That's all I have.
Thank you, Steve. And, um, all I have is, of course, congratulations to Val as well, and I just wanna remind folks, uh, including Val, that, uh, if she would like to seek that position up for a more permanent spot, that it'll be on a write, write-in basis, 'cause we did not receive any, um, uh, applications or any, uh, forms, uh, for anybody to be on the ballot, so, uh, that would be on a write-in campaign, so, uh, congratulations again, and we'll be swearing in here in just a moment. Um, unless you've gotta report, you only give-
Uh, not yet.
Not yet. I'll hold off.
Okay. Other than that, we set record time here, so you guys want to like shoot the breeze about football or? No? Okay. Take a motion.
We adjourn.
Okay. All right. All in favor of adjourned at 6:02?
Aye.
Thank you.
I don't want to get into the-
Aye.
Do something. One of us will be our Constitution.
Do some where that will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially-
And that I will faithfully and impartially-
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all of the duties of the office of City Council.
Discharge all of the duties of the office of the City Council.
Member.
Member.
In Hampton.
In Hampton.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
So help me God if you like.
So.
Thank you very much. Congratulations again.
Thank you very much.